Councilwoman Harris, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
All those who are able, please rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are, Lord, sorry. There are not very many people around who can say that they were the first mayor of a city. Because most of those people are long gone. Because most cities are pretty old. But tonight, we want to honor Dunwoody's first mayor, Ken Wright, who not only served as mayor, but continued to serve our community after his service as mayor ended, as the chairman of our urban redevelopment authority. Ken led the city at a time when everything we had had to be created. There was nothing here. In fact, their first city hall chambers was in Sandy Springs. Because there was nothing here. And he led the efforts to create everything that I believe the city has become and is continuing to become. And as he advances, or as he moves on to his next adventure, I thought it would be appropriate just to give him a Dunwoody-type farewell. So Ken, if you'll join me up front, we have a little presentation.
See the people in this room that I did not expect to see?
Right, right. We'll get in trouble with Jennifer if we don't do it right. So, your legacy is great.
Thank you.
But nothing is more important than the police department.
Amen.
That we started here was one of the biggest priorities for the city. And if I say so myself, we have the best police department in the state and probably in the country.
Absolutely.
And that legacy is because of the work you put in. But I don't, I don't think we could even estimate how many hours you spent when you were mayor, standing up the city, leading up to the city starting. And we are incredibly grateful for your service. And we're very fortunate that you chose to give us your time and talent. And so this is just a little sign of appreciation. And I have to say that I only generally give the key of the city, because Denny didn't leave any rules, to people that turn 100 or older.
I'm not quite there.
Or like rescue someone from a shark or something.
That's upcoming.
Right, right, true. So anyhow, we just wanted to thank you for your service and the legacy you leave. And we're sending this to you. Okay. Where do you want to see? Do you want everybody to come down? Want to come down? Okay.
Come down.
Maybe we'll get one with Denny. We'll add Denny in and your family. Yeah.
My God, look how little they were.
Yeah.
All right, stand up, y'all.
How do you want to do this, gentlemen?
This is perfect. Yep, y'all look great. Ready? One, two, three. Perfect. And then you want to bring?
Denny, you want to come get in the picture, sir? Mayor Shortall. Come on.
I can get on your back, Danny.
But we didn't, like, we didn't want it any further.
Let's be abrupt. Go this way a little bit. Ready, one, two, three. Okay, and then do what?
Oh, sorry. Thank you for your money.
A long time ago.
You to be here, I thought there might be a warrant out for that.
All right, all righty. Perfect, ready, one, two, three.
Oh, thank you.
Everybody know who this is, everybody? This, that's Clayton. This is Cassidy. This is Terry. This is Carrie. And this is Ken.
No, you want to say something, so the stage is yours.
You know what?
You're talking the microphone.
All right, well, thank you. Honest to goodness, was not expecting this. I did get a little hint at, what was it, Green Eggs and Ham? What's the, what's the party wearing? From a, from a certain council person, I was a little surprised. But I was planning on showing up tonight just to say my goodbyes. I grew up in Dunwoody. I was raised in the branches neighborhood. We moved there in 1976. Used to ride my bike in the late 70s to Dunwoody Village. It used to be a grocery store called Big Star. I'd hang out Big Star if I had a buck. I'd buy a, buy a Coke. And personal pan pizza, Pizza Hut. So that was kind of my life in Dunwoody. And I, it, it did me well. And so I wanted to raise my family here, bought our home in Winter Creek in 1993 as a bachelor. Where's Kathy Cobb? Somewhere around here. Kathy Cobb was a neighbor down the street. And, and most of my neighbors at that point, I had a decent amount of parties as a young adult before I was married. So once I did get married, a couple of years later, they said, thank God that dude moved out. Little did they know, it was me. This place has been great. Moved to Dunwoody North, we downsized about six years ago. Georgetown, thank you, Mayor, for continuing to have me on the board of the URA. Georgetown has certainly made a huge progression from 2008. We, city has, has followed through and built out parks and sidewalks and paths. And we've got new housing. And it, it's just exciting to see for an area that really has needed a lot of, a lot of attention. Dunwoody is an awesome place. And I pray to God that the younger generations will step up to the plate for this community and, and do the good, good deeds. No radicals, please, just normal, good, solid, hardworking people that want to do people justice here. But thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for your, for your service. And, and thank you, Dunwoody. I will be back. My son is renting a, renting a house in Dunwoody. So look, look out for, for him. But the last time he was here, he was a little boy. So welcome back. Thank you all. And I'll give you that one more time. Thank you, Mayor, for all the hard work that everybody put in. It, it takes a village and, and, and mayor land. Thank you for, for calling me out. But boy, did we have a lot of people working on the cityhood movement for years and years. And then getting this city up and running was an unbelievable task. So it does take a village, and it is certainly not one person. I just happen to be the, the guy, the symphony head, symphony dude that was getting a lot of talent to make things happen. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you for everybody in this room who was involved in that effort. And one more shout out for Chief and our Dunwoody Police, because, boy, they were one of the biggest reasons that 82% of the voters voted yes to form a city. So keep up the great work, Chief, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will have public comment. Mayor Shortall, you'll approach. And you can have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Ben Shortall. I live in 2011 Widen Way in the great city of Dunwoody, Georgia. And I just came, I came to praise Caesar tonight. That's what I came for. You take a look around, take a look at this building. Take a look at the streets being paved. Take a look at all that. Take a look at that chief right over there. By the way, he was one of the first hires, for those of you that don't know. And all of that really, really orchestrated around that man right there. I mean, I was, all I did was stand in his shadows. And, you know, he was the head of the DHA, for those of you that don't know. And then we got a couple of heads of the DHA after that. He was head of the group, what was that group you headed up, Ken? Dunwoody? Citizens for Dunwoody was ahead of that. I was a Dunwoody yes. And, I mean, just everything we did, you know, relied on him. And, and I'll tell you, you know, there's a lot of big words you can use in the language. I, I'm a Marines, I use short ones. And, and the two biggest words in the English language are thank you. Thank you, Ken Wright. Thank you for building this freaking city.
Uh, next up, excuse me, next up is Deborah Berger. And you'll have three minutes, ma'am. And there's a clock up there if you need to say.
Okay, I'll try not to take all three minutes. Anyway, my name is Deborah Berger, and I'm a resident of Dunwoody for the last 10 years. Grew up in Atlanta. And I just recently retired from the Humane Society of the United States and have worked on puppy mill pipeline ordinances all over the state and am so pleased and appreciative that y'all are considering this ordinance. I'm here on behalf of my family and my neighbors to thank you so much for everything that you're doing to make Dunwoody a leader in animal welfare. Y'all did a great job covering most of the rationale in this background sheet, so I don't really need to go into any more details. But I'm happy to answer questions. But mostly, I just want to say that this is going to be good for both consumers and animals, because there's a lot of consumer protection issues around pet retail stores. So thank you so much. Just really happy that this is being considered and just want y'all to know that you can reach out to me if you do have any questions. But I feel like you've got it covered pretty well and look forward to its passage. So thank you.
Thank you. Zach Humphries, approach the, whatever we call it, podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Hey, everyone. So I had a really wonderful time over the past weekend and this past week volunteering at Lemonade Days. It was, you know, really wonderful just to, you know, just see the youth of, of tomorrow. Just, you know, having so much fun. And it's, you know, I have such fond memories of that. And I think a lot of us do. I think I've really, really loved, you know, the love and support that I've gotten from, you know, a lot of members of the community as I'm, you know, kind of starting to like gather more new, you know, new perspectives and, and new ideas and knowledge about my hometown of Dunwoody. And I really appreciate the people who have been, you know, kind of patient with me, like, through this process. So I'm like slowly, you know, becoming, slowly more knowledgeable about these things. I think, I think a lot of that knowledge, you know, it, it's important because I, I think a lot of our youth of today is, especially our suburban youth, is, is kind of disconnected. And I, I think that there's, we increasingly find a kind of gap between the generations. And, I mean, just, just over the past weekend, some of my little sister's friends from, from college came over to our house, and they were really interested in what I was doing. But, you know, it's, I, I think a lot of them, they really, they really lack hope, like, for the future. And it's, it's really difficult to see these children, you know, really struggling with, with finding purpose and meaning. I, I remember one of my sister's friends, he said, he's a, he's a queer man. And, and he said, Dunwoody will always be my home, but I will never feel welcome here. And I, I think that that's really, it, you know, I, I cried about that, like, that, that's really awful. Like, our children do deserve to, to feel welcome here. And but, and a lot of them are frustrated, and they don't really know why exactly. And I think that a lot of times, like, that leads to a lot of radicalization when you don't have that knowledge. You know, you fill in the gaps with whatever narratives you see fit. And that happened to me, too. But, you know, I, I would say that their frustration is, is valid. You know, I, the frozen asset clause in the charter, you know, it is generational discrimination because, you know, I, I couldn't buy a home in 2008. I, I was nine years old. You know, and it, and it hurts the families of Dunwoody today. And, you know, they, they are frustrated. And I think that it's important to really listen to them. So, you know, when, when they get mad about things and stuff like that, like, I, I do ask for y'all to, to be patient, kind of in the way that, like, y'all have been to me. So thank you.
Thank you. Ali, you're not behind a thing today. Good.
Thank you, City Council. Thanks for having me. I wanted to bring something more for awareness. Recently, as you know, I, I walk around the city a lot, and I've recently noticed a larger number of homeless, non-patrons, non-residents around the city. And I might have an idea to why a little bit. So about two weeks ago, there was an incident in Sandy Springs with a disorderly person. Someone coming to Starbucks just kind of causing a lot of trouble. So I, I made a request for the body camera footage from Sandy Springs through an open records process. Normally with Dunwoody or other cities, this is normally like really easy, right? You get the, Sandy Springs fought me really hard on this video. I was actually kind of shocked on why they fought me. Initially, they came back, gave me like a huge charge, said this, this. I came back and said, let's, you know, negotiate a little bit of it. Let's, I can take one of the four videos you pick, not a big deal. It's all fine. Then they came back to me and tried to charge another search. I mean, they, they, it was, it was very odd. And normally, I've noticed that if a city is going to fight you up something, normally there's something there. I didn't know what was going to be there. Then they ended up charging me, I think, like 15, whatever. I, I finally got the video. Played the video for 90 seconds, hit the pause button and said, oh, I get it now. I know I didn't want me to see that video. In the video, it's a disorderly person. And it's at Starbucks, they're not pressing charges, no trespasses. But someone who appears to maybe have some mental health issues, you know, maybe homeless, maybe having a, a drug. Something's off, unfortunately, for this gentleman. Not, not a bad person, just, just not, not the right place. And so he's talking to Sandy Springs Police Department. The police officers are like, okay, listen, like, we don't really want to deal with you again. Where are you headed? You got to head off here. He points this way, which is south towards Sandy Springs, and said, well, I'll go that way. And then the police officer looks at him and goes, have you thought of going that way, perimeter mall? Yes. So, um, that's probably why they didn't want me to see the video. Now, I've dealt with the Sandy Springs Police Department and their administration, and I will not disparage them. In fact, they are a very good group of people, very honest, very noble. They do a great job. Some of their officers are just fantastic. So I will not say anything negative of Sandy Springs at all. And my hope is this is one issue in isolation, maybe one rookie cop who just kind of maybe just didn't want to deal with the problem. But wanted to bring this more for awareness. I did send an email to the Dunwoody Police Department, and ideally, we can maybe politely address this. But if it is not an issue in isolation, it would unfortunately explain why we're getting a little bit more of the homeless population or maybe more of the issues at hand. So that stated again, not trying to disparage the Sandy Springs Police Department, just trying to bring something more for awareness. In addition, while I've got the mic, I will say and take a moment to really praise Dunwoody's open records and transparencies. Out of ranking a bunch of cities, I'd probably rank you as number one. Very easy to work with. If there's something that I need, the answer is always, how can we help you get it? You deserve to get it. You're a citizen, very reasonable. So I do want to give a lot of praise to Dunwoody's Open Records Unit and just simply bring this to awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Brown. Approach the podium, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Scott Brown. I live at 4934 Vernon Oaks Drive. My house is at the corner of Womack Road and Vernon Oaks Drive. Last Thursday, there was yet another car accident at this intersection. I grew up in Dunwoody. I returned to the city about five years ago and recently got the opportunity to move back into my childhood home with my kids. When I was a kid, this intersection was always a problem. Decades later, it's the same. I think there's been at least three in the past five or six months since moving back into this house. And I recall numerous wrecks growing up, including my sister being hit crossing on the street on foot. I care about our community. I'm concerned. All our, all my neighbors are concerned about the safety of this intersection. Just orientation-wise, from the intersection, it goes uphill on Womack towards the Vermac four-way stop. It's a blind hill. You can't see cars coming as they're coming from the four-way stop approaching Vernon Oaks Drive. You really cannot see them until they crest over the hill. And it's really kind of last minute and not enough time to, to react after they crest the hill. So there's a lot of, a lot of accidents. Cars end up on my yard, on other yards that are on the four-way point of that intersection. I, you know, I, I just asked Council and Mayor to, you know, try to look into this and take some action before more cars end up in our yards, before someone else gets injured, before someone loses a loved one potentially. It's, it's definitely an ongoing issue. I'm really not sure why this particular intersection has never been addressed, considering the ongoing problem. But maybe it's because somebody hasn't been a squeaky wheel in the past. I'm not sure. I think there could be easy, easy and cheap solutions. I believe a speed hump going west from the four-way intersection on Vermac would be a solution to at least slow people down before they crest that hill. I, you know, don't want to see speed humps all over the city, but I think this is a unique situation where you've got that blind hill and you've got the two-way stop at Leeds Court and Vernon Oaks Drive just causing this ongoing issue. My commitment to the community is that I will keep coming back to this body and speaking about this as many times as necessary to get something done. I'll come back next time and bring a few more of my neighbors. Next time after that, I'll ask them to each bring a few, and we'll just keep the ball rolling from there. So that's, that's my commitment to the community and my promise to you all. So thanks and hope to hear from you. I'm on the planning commission, so you know how to get it.
And Michael Smith is back there. If you'll make sure you talk to him before you leave or grab him now. Thank you. All right, that conclude, that's all the cards I have for public, the first phase of public comment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I take a few minutes of personal privilege?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Tonight, we had the honor of honoring our first mayor, Mr. Ken Wright. And it's a privilege for me to be here today, to see him and get honored, as he should. He deserves it. As many of you know, I'm a PAC rat. I've kept a lot of documents from the past. Would you believe that I have Ken's first inauguration speech? And I have that, and I read that the other night, and I'm like, I figured he was being honored here tonight. I had a little inside information. I wasn't 100% sure. The agenda didn't really show it, but I was guessing that was all about you, sir. So I pulled up that original speech. I don't know if you still have it, but I do. And I won't republish it, but I have it, just in case. You, you thanked all the volunteers. You thanked all the candidates. And you really said, these council members that sit up here on the stage, what they're going to go through and the trials and tribulations and the dedication, the hours to get here. And then you talked about our families and how they're giving up their time with their loved ones. You gave a lot of good advice. You were talking about working together as a council. We're working for the greater good. You talked about the history of Dunwoody. And you mentioned Herb Sprague had a meeting on your second birthday in 1972, how the first idea of the city of Dunwoody came and the neighbors got together to talk about, can we have a city of Dunwoody? And that happened in 1972, and you mentioned that. I appreciate your leadership, sir. I appreciate the care and dedication you have provided to this city. It was unending. For the two years that you gave, you gave it all. For the many years before that, to get us to that point, greatly appreciated. I really am a man of few words, but I can't not say something today. You're really, you set the stage and you set where we should be moving forward. And for that, I just want to say thank you. And thank you to your family for giving up the time away from this gentleman and the efforts that he put in. Really, it's a big thank you to everybody. I just want to, again, say thank you.
That was very nice. Do you want to read the first paragraph of his speech?
I have it. I don't have it with me. I have it on my computer at home.
Darn. Okay. Next up, Colin May, I believe. Is that the man?
Hello.
Hello.
Mayor and City Council. My name is Colin May. I'm the Chair of the City of Dunwoody Sustainability Committee. I have the privilege of honoring two.
I'm gonna ask, one second. I bet this does not need to be up yet, because you're not doing the report first, you're doing the awards first. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. So hello, everyone. I'm, I'm Colin May, Chair of the City of Dunwoody Sustainability Council. I'm here to honor an individual for the sustainability hero. The Sustainability Hero Award Program celebrates exemplary individuals and organizations for their dedication, service, and leadership in sustainable practices. We have Donna Burt here. She's a lifetime server of the Dunwoody Nature. She's a lifetime server of the Dunwoody Nature Center and a longtime Dunwoody Garden Club member at the Brook Run Park. And she's here. Do you have any words to say?
I don't know. I, I said I wasn't going to say anything, but then, as I'm sitting there thinking, I grew up in the Depression and then I lived in World War II. I used to have to go out and pick the darn squash every morning. I raised chickens when I was six years old because we had to sustain ourselves. And we only have one planet. And I'm sorry, I'm really old and... Well, I think I'm 20, but the, but I really fear for our planet. We're going to run out of water. That's my newest thing is, in fact, I just have a program to do somewhere on trying to save water. It wasn't all that long ago that Georgia wanted to raise the border so that we could get water from the Tennessee River. And we keep adding people, but we don't add any more water sources. And I'm really concerned about that. But I'll do my little part. And I, I enjoy teaching to small children. I grew up in the woods. I think everybody got to grow up that way. I still, Denny's agreeing with me. I still would rather spend more time outside than inside. And unfortunately, my house looks like it, too. But, but my yard keeps looking good. So thank you all very much. And I didn't expect to have my fan clubs here, but... Thank.
Thank you, Donna, for your service. Next up, I would like to honor a business. They are doing great in regenerative farming, composting. You might recognize their Art Coffee House down there on Tilly Mill Road. I would like to invite Art Coffee House up here to accept the Sustainability Hero Award. Do you guys have any words to say?
Not too much, just we are so grateful to the Sustainability Committee, to the city, for all the support we've received. And we're thrilled to be a part of a community that, obviously, sustainability and regenerative, the law of return, it's all very important. So we're thankful for you guys, and we're looking forward to many years to come.
Thank you. Oh, important. Colin, before you start your report, I just want to say a couple of things, uh, about the recipients. So Donna is responsible, um, for lots of green and great things in Dunwoody. She was key, she's been key to a lot of very loved institutions and um, activities in our city, plus she is a tireless volunteer. Um, and so Donna, we really appreciate you. We do. We love you and we appreciate you and congratulations. And then Arc Coffee House, um, with their sustainable methods, but also they let people drop off pumpkins, um, to feed animals. And they help Malachite compost, or at least they were helping. I don't know if that's still going on. They still going on. That Malachite often gets produce that isn't edible by humans. They help compost and then also feed it to pigs because they're not so particular apparently. So, um, they really helped, uh, Malachite and also reduce waste. So, we appreciate your efforts and wait for, and also we appreciate your investment in our community, um, in an under-invested in area particularly. So, thank you. All right, Colin, now you can give your report.
All right. Here to do an update, a little highlights from last year and what we're looking forward to upcoming this year. Last year, we were able to revise the green building.
You need to put it back on now. Sorry. Okay. They're doing it. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, so we were able to revise the green building policy amendment to broaden our choice of certification standards during, that could apply to any size building while allowing projects brought to council if life cycle costs shows projects may not be financially feasible. Basically, we were able to say you can use any kind of green standard you want. And hopefully that helps out with building processes. We're able to get our Tree City USA designation for the thirteenth consecutive year, going on with our front yard pre-tree planting. Showing success committing, committing our city council commitment and our people in our city committed to planting our tree canopy. We moved on to the, we also hosted our, we hosted our continually successful annual e-waste event last October, diverting more than fifteen tons of electronic waste from our landfills and giving our residents the opportunity to recycle responsibly. And as far as our Green Speaks, um, workshops are going, our April compost at home workshop drew a record attendance, highlighting the ability to compost as a business and as individuals through from our guest speakers at Simply Tie and our some residents. Um, our monthly D news articles, like the recent feature on heat pump water heaters showcases sustainable home improvement alternatives. And as for our priorities for next year, we are wanting to continue to do our household, how does this waste events and our e-waste events. Continue to have one at least of those. We're fifteen points away from our Platinum Arc Award, our green communities. That's a rare distinction that would spot, spotlight our city as a regional model. This requires cross-department collaborations. We look forward to having regular meetings with some of you guys. And then obviously continue to support our front yard tree planting program. Put some closing remarks. I like working with everyone with the community development. I look forward to working with Rob Price as a city council liaison. And I would like to see some more solar on top of maybe our new roofs. But that's what we've got for our sustainability update. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Colin. We appreciate it. And thank you to the members of the Sustainability Commission. We appreciate your service as well. Thank y'all. Anybody questions? Uh, Rob. Sorry, Colin.
A quick comment just to, um, to, to echo the mayor's thanks. I, I don't think our citizens realize how impressive the resumes are of the members of this, um, Sustainability Committee. There are some truly skilled um, people with really, um, just really impressive educational and work backgrounds, and they're providing free expertise to the city. And I, I mean, that's a service to your community that is just immeasurable and I very much appreciate it. So, thank you to, to you and to the rest of the committee for everything you do for the city.
Thank you. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a Bicycle Month proclamation. And, um, so May is Bicycle Month, National Bicycle Month. And we're going to celebrate it by having a bike, we have a couple of events. Bike to Lunch Day with the City Council on May ninth. And Joe, where are they going? Where, because I don't run a bike. Where are you going to lunch?
All guys and/or the fast casual Indian over in Hammond.
Gotcha.
We wanted to make it quick and simple. Outside there on, on Hammond in front of State Farm.
Okay. And then also a family bike ride with City Council on May seventeenth as part of the Kids to Parks Day. Or you can just go out and take a ride on your bike. We also, we are a bicycling friendly community. We have a commitment to making it safe for, for pedestrians and cyclists. And we passed, uh, the states first and maybe only ordinance called the, um, Vulnerable Road uh, Users Ordinance, uh, a few years ago. And we are excited to celebrate Bike Month, so go out and ride your bike if you do so. Okay, next it bleed, uh, and we have a beautiful proclamation. Uh, that we, we are uh, going to share with Councilman Secunder. All right. Now, uh, uh, next up, I think is Michael Starling for an economic development update, first quarter of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, uh, this is the first quarter of twenty twenty-five Economic Development Update. Here to talk about the office market. Um, it's probably the, the first and, uh, second and third question I get, uh, from people about how things are going. Um, it's, it's, most people are concerned about the office market. Uh, so the good news is, um, the, the office market is growing in perimeter and Dunwoody. We've had a really strong last sort of twelve um, to eighteen months. Um, as a reminder, we've got about, uh, ten million square feet of office space with about twenty-six percent vacancy. Um, that is on top of about almost thirty percent availability. The difference between vacancy and availability is, um, availability includes, um, leases that maybe not be occupied. So, we've got a lot of space that is leased, but it's not occupied by a user. In, in perimeter, we've had a number of big leases, AIG leased in Brookhaven. StubHub is the most recent. They announced, um, a large lease, um, over in Sandy Springs. Um, Newell moved out of their headquarters and Asbury bought Newell's former headquarters and they're, they're relocating from Gwinnett County. Uh, but Dunwoody has had our fair share. Uh, the most recent is Trinet. Uh, the mayor was able to announce that at our state of, of the city. They have not announced their final location. Uh, they are working on a lease as we speak. That should be done very quickly. Uh, this represents about five hundred thousand square feet of space, the, just the, the, the companies here, and this is not all of the companies. This is only leases that are over twenty, twenty-five thousand square feet. We do have a lot of, a lot of large blocks of office space, uh, on the market. Campus two forty-four, they have about two-thirds of their top floor, uh, still available. Uh, and they have, um, they have a full floor of sublease space on the third floor. Uh, when transportation insight leased, they leased two floors. Uh, they found out they only needed one, so they've got a full floor, ninety thousand, three thousand square feet on the sublease market. About a hundred and twelve thousand square feet at, uh, North Terraces and another hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet and South Terraces. Terrace is about a million square feet of, of space between the two buildings. The, these large blocks of contiguous space are important because when large companies like AIG and, and Newell are looking to relocate, they're looking at these large blocks, um, of space. At Ravinia, we've got quite a bit, although Ravinia Three has been, um, probably one of the more successful, um, um, with leases recently. And then at High Street, they have their two, uh, uh, new office properties. Uh, they've got about a hundred thousand square feet total. Uh, above the, the retail, um, on either side of the building. Uh, zombie office space, this is a term that, that I use. Um, it is space that, uh, I don't think the owner of the office building has any intention of leasing the space anymore. We've got about a million square feet of, of space that I would consider zombie. As you can see, it's located on the periphery. It's not in the core. Most of it is nineteen seventies, maybe nineteen eighties, um, vintage. And almost all the buildings are in some level of redevelopment. Familiar with fifty-six Primers Center East, it went back to the bank a number of years ago. It sold, uh, to a developer. Um, they did have a, a rezoning, uh, that rezoning was, was pulled, but I, 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 I've heard there's a lot of interest from other residential developers on that property. Twelve hundred Ashwood recently went back to the bank. Um, it was purchased by a developer. Uh, we are talking to a number of, of users for that property. So, I think you'll see a rezoning pretty quick on that. Uh, the two buildings at High Street are absolutely going to come down, uh, when they move on to Phase Two. And then you're familiar with sixty-four and sixty-six Primers Center East. Both of those buildings are going through some level of, of redevelopment. So, when these properties come off the market, our twenty-six percent vacancy is going to drop to around eighteen, seventeen or eighteen percent with that. Now, we also lose about a million square feet of commercial property. Um, we're, we're obviously interested in keeping as much commercial, but the value, and we don't know exactly what the redevelopment will be, but the value of the new development is probably going to be significantly higher than what the value of these properties are. Most of these properties are valued for the land only. It's not, it's not the buildings. So, it's a good news story, I think. The quicker we get these properties redeveloped, the tighter our office market will be and the more likely it will be that we get new office built, uh, at some point in the future. Uh, always want to talk about what differentiates the, the office market and what we need to really focus on. We compete, um, with other areas, uh, of, of metro Atlanta on the quality of place. So, our Edge City two point O, uh, had a lot of recommendations around this. Cushman Wakefield came out with, uh, this study just a couple of weeks ago. And it really talks about experiential economy that, that office users, that residents, that, uh, visitors are looking for an experience. They're not looking just for somewhere to go. And, um, it really takes a compelling office experience to compete. So, companies move here because they want to get their workforce to come into work. And that workforce only wants to come somewhere where it's exciting to be. They don't want to just go into an office instead of, at a desk. They can do that at home. So, uh, creating this kind of interesting office space is what's going to, going to differentiate us from, from other locations. Uh, it's also about collaboration, building relationships. Again, when workers come into the office, they want to do things that they cannot do at home. Um, and a lot of that is about socialization. It's about going out at lunch with your, with your team. It's about going out after work with your team and building those bonds. And so, it's really creating these areas of, of work play, play-work. And so, if you think about what Campus two forty-four has done, what High Street is doing, these are the kinds of places we need to develop more of in, in Dunwoody. And it's what's going to differentiate the office, our office market, uh, from others. So, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Uh, questions, Catherine.
Thank you, Michael. Is the twenty-six percent a change from year over year?
It's been, that's been pretty steady since COVID. Uh, it's gone up a little bit. The availability rate has come down a little bit. We were, we were in, in the low thirties at, at one point. We've had quite a bit of sublease space come off the market. Which when you're leasing office, sublease has to come off first because it's, it's always the cheapest and it's usually ready to go. Um, so it's, it's been pretty steady and that's, that's pretty close to what, um, other areas that we compete with or, or looking at.
Well, that's pretty good, given that we're getting more office space into the market.
Yes, yeah, we've, we've grown, we've, we've added, uh, a couple of hundred thousand square feet of office space with what Campus two forty-four did and, and High Street.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, uh, anybody else? Oh, go ahead.
So, uh, you're, you're term zombie office space. Are there any other, you know, you, buildings that are leased now that don't have tenants that you think might slip into zombie status in the future? I mean, are we at risk of? Or, or do you think we've kind of reached the saturation of the buildings that aren't?
I think that's mostly it, what we found. There are a couple of other buildings that are, that are struggling with, with leasing and oftentimes they become zombie, uh, spaces because there's, uh, the, the, sometime in the future, the owner is going to have to refinance. And if you bought the, a building in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, or even twenty, and you're refinancing now, that building is not worth what it was back then. Uh, valuations have, have come down. So, that oftentimes sort of pushes buildings into a zombie status. Uh, but I don't think there's any more. I think that's, that, that's most of them. Yep.
Nobody else? Um, interesting times.
Very.
Yes. There's, I have, I don't have a New York Times subscription, but there's an article about their largest apartment conversion. I could just see the headline. Maybe we can get our hands, I mean, apart, that was not an office building conversion.
Yeah.
And I looked it up on the internet and the studio started four thousand dollars a month for the studios, the three bedrooms in New York City. So.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find that article. I think Jay has a.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, next up is the Consent Agenda. Anybody have questions on these items?
Move to approve.
Move by Tom. Second by Catherine. Any further discussion? Um, hearing none. I call the question, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Um, there's none. The consent agenda passes? You read these, okay.
Mayor, moving to business items. The first item on the agenda is a contract amendment for final design, Winters Chapel Path, Phase Two, Tiffany Segal.
City, being Mayor and Council, um, this is the contract amendment with Practical Design Partners for Phase Two of the Winters Chapel Path. And this was presented at the previous city council meeting, and I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Um, questions? Hold on one second. Uh, Joe, go ahead. Ask your question because something just happened with my computer.
Something out there for the record because I know that some people look at our agendas after the fact and want to put this in perspective. So, spare with me. The winner, ten years ago, this is a long run. This is a long game here. Ten years ago, April twenty fifteen, literally, there was the Winters Chapel Road Area Study approved by our city council in twenty fifteen. Um, folks can go to our website. It's two hundred and ninety-six page PDF that includes public comments and so on. And just bear with me for the public. So, there's, this is full disclosure. We're, we're just not throwing things out here. The cities of Peachtree, Corners, and Dunwoody joined efforts to create the Winters Chapel Road Area Study. The goal of the study and resulting recommendations is to create a cohesive plan for the implementation of projects, maintenance of streetscape elements, and zoning and code enforcement in this area. for the implementation of projects, maintenance of streetscape elements, and zoning and code enforcement in this area. The study was guided by the community development planning directors of both of the cities, as well as their respective public works directors. Additional input came from a public workshop, meetings with the planning commissions and city councils for both cities. A public workshop was held in February of twenty fifteen at the Winters Chapel United Methodist Church. Over one hundred and seventy people were in attendance to that, to review all the recommendations and so on. They also met with each of the city's planning commissions, Peachtree Corners and the city of Dunwoody. Planning commissions met during March of twenty fifteen. Peachtree Corners approved this in March of twenty fifteen, and the city of council of Dunwoody approved it in April of twenty fifteen. And the whole corridor, it's, it's a large scope, if you look at it, it talks about, and I, I'd like to have a, a follow-up maybe by staff to see where are we on the implementation of this, because there's a lot of different things, because it's the entire corridor from Peachtree Industrial over. And it has the jurisdictions, but the corridor study talked about consistent speed limit through the corridor. Are we there yet? Landscaping, it was talking about even just putting in trees and shrubs as we go. I think that there's some opportunities, crosswalks, bus shelters, rest areas with benches, pedestrian lighting, there was a, talk about a pocket park and existing public, public land space. Talk about drainage and stormwater improvements that we always talk about sidewalks. And yes, it did incorporate a twelve-foot wide multi-use path on the west side. So the city council on April twenty-seventh voted, in twenty fifteen voted unanimously to approve a twelve-foot wide multi-use path on the west side of, of Winters Chapel. At them, at the meeting, council member Doug Thompson moved to amend the motion to approve the plan to include that preference of option B twelve for a twelve-foot wide multi-use path. And, and talks about that substituting a, using a multi-use path instead of sidewalk on the west side of the road. And, and so on, per Ashto guidelines. And at that meeting, respectfully, council member Henigan seconded that amendment for, for the twelve-foot trail to, to pass, and it passed seven to zero. And, and the original motion to pass this corridor study was approved motion moved by Terry Knoll. So those who voted for it were the then-mayor Mike Davis and council members Terry Knoll, Lynn Deutsch, John Henigan, Jim Reitser, Doug Thompson, and Dennis Shordel unanimously in twenty fifteen. So, and the last thing I have, I just asked Ginger if she could play the video that we have, just to give, so everybody, we're going to put a bow on us. If Ginger could just play that video for Zoom for, for readers to show you the big picture of what our intention is. And then I'll, I'll reclaim, then I'll go with my time, thank you, Ginger, so go ahead, thanks.
If it doesn't play in about fifteen seconds, we're not showing it. Everyone was there, pretty much.
Well, it gives a good background anyway of what we're doing, so it talks about the stormwater, it talks about a mid, mid.
Up there it goes, okay.
It's a great day in Dunwoody, because we are here to celebrate officially the opening of the first phase of the Winter Chapel Trail. This project, along with the new improved sidewalk on the other side of the street, is transformative for this part of our community. The second phase will connect to the commercial area, allowing nearby residents easy transit to do their shopping and for entertainment. We're so excited and proud of this project, and we can't wait to see what comes next. I appreciate our friends from Wilson Construction doing this beautiful work. And now to celebrate, I think it's time to cut a ribbon, three.
Jermaine struggled for years with dental issues before finally finding Nubia.
Ginger, that, Ginger, you can cut it off. No, Ginger, just turn it off, that was enough, thank you, thank you, thank you, alright. Does anyone else have questions or comments? I do. I'm starting to sound like a broken record. So the design work for this, we've already paid for, or we're approving a contract amendment, and the funds for the additional work is coming from where?
Last twenty twenty-five.
Okay. So before, because we don't even intend to start construction until, we won't even start right away acquisition until winter of twenty-seven, correct, based on the schedule?
Yes.
So by then we'll have a pretty clear picture of the federal situation, right? We'll know if the funds are coming for other projects. I'm, I know that I'm driving everybody crazy, but ARC is already reporting that some money isn't coming in. And so I don't, we can finish the design and obviously it'll come back to council before we start construction, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Move to approve.
Move by Tom. Second by Catherine. Any further, John, did you have a question?
I have a question regarding the stormwater aspect of it. Stormwater is a big piece of this, I've been hearing that over and over again. I'm trying to wrap my head around what came first, the stormwater or the trail? If the trail wasn't twelve feet wide, would we need that stormwater? Was there stormwater issues, are we fixing a problem that existed, or are we causing a problem that then needs to be fixed?
I'm unaware that there are any issues with stormwater out there. We're, we're designing a larger surface of blocking, so we're going to have to account for the extra runoff.
So we're putting more impervious surface, so therefore we have to capture that water and do something with it. So we're causing the problem to then fix the problem to a certain extent. So that's something that, when you say it's a stormwater project, we're causing the problem first off. I've gone through the plans, I, I love the fact that we're putting a new stoplight in. I think that, that is an amenity that needs to be there, I like that, I like that a lot. I have some problems with the, the historical things that were just raised in the sense of, you know, council approved a planning document to explore something. We've explored it, the council voted to explore it, we did all the research. That doesn't mean that it's a final thing, we still have lots of questions. The mayor is bringing up financial questions, I have financial questions. Over time, things change. There was a bond referendum that didn't pass, you know, there, there's things change, much like this council voted unanimously to have a turf field at Peachtree Middle, Middle School. Things change, you change, the, things change over time, things got voted out, things change. So historical things, records are great, and I, and I appreciate looking backwards, but at the same time, we're voting on things that move the city forward based on what we know today, and I understand that. So if I vote no now, it's not that I'm being conflicting to what I said prior, it's that I have new information. So I just want to make sure that I put that out there, so thank you.
Michael, can you maybe clarify the stormwater? Because I know in Georgetown, while we added surface, it was a massive redoing of pipe, so is this different, the same?
It, it's some of both, I mean, yes, when we add impervious surface, we have to deal with that new stormwater. But there's also some, you know, a lot of the roads in Dunwoody that were built, you know, fifty years ago, at that time, they really didn't have a lot of stormwater control, so it's also improving the drainage on the road itself as far as there, you know, you, you drive down an older road, you don't see very many drains, and then the newer roads, we have more drains to get the water off the road, which keeps the road from flooding and makes, makes it safer, so it's, it's both. Both dealing with the new and improving the old.
If I remember correctly, Phase One, we, there was, there was a major flooding issues over by Charmont and Tilly Mill, I'm, I'm sorry, Winters, Winters Chapel, that was addressed as part of that, correct? Where they, actually the road was regraded to address some, some stormwater issues there.
We, there was some, the east side of the road, the side that the synagogue and the neighborhood are on, did not drain well, and before we started, and we, we redirected some of that water to try to improve the, the drainage in that area. And then we also put in five-foot diameter pipes to store the water before it's released.
Hey, Michael, back to the funding thing, could you, I, I, I was at the ARC planning class, and so this guy Kofi Wakisi, Wakisi, so with the ARC Transportation, he talked about the differences in federal level, there's discretionary grants, and then there's formula funds, and he said that he has no awarded transportation grants have not been rescinded at all. And could you talk a little bit difference, is this a discretionary, or is it a formula fund? Where formula fund legally there, it says they cannot rescind. That's what I, that's what Kofi said, if it's, if it's a formula funded project.
The, these are formula funds, that's where the, the federal transportation dollars get distributed to all the states based on a formula, and then whatever's coming to Georgia to the Atlanta region, ARC helps direct where those dollars go, and, and so that's where this is coming from.
Okay, that was, the, the stormwater answer was helpful. But I also want to say something because I'm guilty of it too, we keep using, we've been using fifty years since the city was founded. Roads weren't paved in fifty, fifty, you know, the first fifty years when they went in, when they built the neighborhoods, roads hadn't been paved since, but we're at sixty-five now years. So I would guarantee you that Winters Chapel is probably at least sixty years old. So I mean, I do it too all the time, when people say something, I'm like, well, the roads weren't paved in fifty years, but it's, anyway, we're well past that, thank you. Okay, there's an item on the floor, the, no, it's already moved. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Alright, that passes six to one, Sharon, thank you. Tiffany, you're up again.
This is the framework, project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Phase Two Winters Chapel Path that we just discussed.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Stacy? Move to approve.
Second.
Second by Joe, move by Stacy. Any further discussion or questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor. Any opposed? That passes six to one, Sharon. And that's Michael.
Funding authorization for path between Edson Road and Cherry Hill Line, Michael Smith.
This item was discussed at the last council meeting, and based on the discussion amongst the council, we updated the, the, the recommendation to, we, it was proposed as a twelve-foot wide path. We revised that based on council discussion to recommend a ten-foot wide path. Everything else is the same, that will, that's a change that can be made during construction. It will result in a minor cost savings that will work out with the contractor. We, it's, it should be a very small amount, so we left the contract amount the same, but we've included the recommendation for a ten-foot wide path.
Anybody have questions? John?
Michael, I see that the funding for this isn't really a federal grant, it's more the state of Georgia American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funds, is that correct?
Yes, it's, it started as federal money that then was passed, you know, it's ARPA money that the state is administering, so the source is federal.
So are we then required to follow federal guidelines for a path? In other words, we had discussion before, the conversation at the last council meeting started at eight feet. We went back and forth, and I think you brought up the requirements of it being a path, couldn't go below ten. Is that still true based on this funding, or based that it's now state grant money, it doesn't really matter if it's eight feet or ten feet?
I, I would be concerned that we would not be fulfilling the commitments that, for the grant, because when we applied for it, we said we were going to build a path, a bicycle and pedestrian path, and then if we didn't, if we made it less than ten feet, it really doesn't meet the definition of that, and so I would be concerned about how that would affect the funding.
Did your application say twelve feet?
It did.
And is there no concern then of the reduction of those two feet?
We, we clarified that, we asked specifically about ten feet, and they said that would be okay, we didn't, we didn't ask them about anything else.
Well, thank you for that, I guess my, my concern is that this is a small connection between two streets where there used to be a thoroughfare at one point, but basically you're just adjoining two neighborhoods over vacant land that the city has. In the future, we may want future connections, I still think ten feet with all, there's going to be lighting and there's going to be, it's going to be done up and wide. To me, it's still a little overreach, for me, I, the community is happy that we went down to ten, they're thankful, and I'm, I'm letting you know that they are thankful that you went down to ten, they really wish it would be eight. But, you know, it's, it's a start, and it sounds like there's no way for you to concur to an eight-foot trail based on the application calling it a path. Is this what I'm getting from your vibe?
Yeah, I would, I would be concerned about this, whether we would still be eligible for the funding if we went below ten feet, because it would no longer be a path, which is what we said we were going to build.
No, got it. Alright, thank you, sir.
I want to, that's a good, I want to clarify that just for the public, this is not our ARPA funds. This is something we got from the state, from their ARPA funds, correct?
Correct.
That then became our funds, and then I also want to ask Eric, we had talked about it at the retreat, revisiting or updating our transportation plan. I don't know if we've started to schedule that out, but we need to get on it, because this is obviously an issue we need to talk about in terms of definitions and that kind of thing moving forward, in my opinion, I'm one person. Alright, any other questions or comments? Move to approve. Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by Joe, wait, had already done that? Okay, thank you. Alright, move by Stacy, second by Joe. Any further discussion or questions, seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you, Sharon.
Item, item number nine on the agenda is approval of guaranteed maximum price contract with Mueller Purcell to construct a new maintenance facility at Brooklyn Park, Michael Smith.
Back in November, we, the city council approved a construction manager at risk contract with Mueller Purcell and authorized the, for them to provide pre-construction services, working with the city and the design team to develop a guaranteed maximum price to construct the Brooklyn Maintenance Facility. Just to refresh everybody's memory, we're, there's an existing facility and we're looking, it doesn't really meet the needs of the city, it's very old, it has some issues, and we've have been planning to build a new facility on that site. The, the site plan that we've developed, there's, it's the building on the left in the picture, the little square, that's the, a office building, and then behind that would be what we're calling a warehouse building. Both, both buildings are planned to be very basic, simple, pre-engineered metal building structures. In front of the warehouse area, the, the, there'd be a paved yard where for material staging and storage and equipment. Also, the, kind of the pipe-looking things that you see under that yard in the drawing, that would be a series of buried stormwater storage chambers to control runoff from the site. Currently, there, there are no, there is no stormwater detention with the current facility, so that would be a big improvement to capture the water and treat it before it goes into the stream. The floor plans for the office building I'm showing here, the one on the left is the office building. This would have offices for park maintenance staff and our, the vendor that provides our parks and public works maintenance. There's a break room and some restrooms there. The building on the right is a warehouse, it's really just big open areas for storage of equipment and materials, and there, there's roll-up doors that open up into the yard. The, this is a view of the front of the office building. It'll be a metal building, but we will put, we do plan to put split face block, block on the bottom with siding above. It would match the look of a lot of the other park buildings in the park. And then this is what the warehouse would look, look like from the, looking at it from the yard. Just a three D view here, the office building in the front, the warehouse in the back. So back when we talked about this in November. we had, had identified two point nine million in funding allocated to the project. And we were projecting based on, we had gone through a proposal process and based on the, the estimates we had gotten from a number of contractors, we projected that we could need another nine hundred thousand dollars to, um, to, to complete the facility. Now I'm going to turn it over to Bert Vandemere with Vanderbeil Management, who is who we've hired to help manage this project for the city. And he'll go through an overview of the, the project costs that make up the guaranteed maximum price that we're asking for an amendment for tonight. And then after he goes through the costs, Richard Plateau will come up to address the funding for the project. So I'll turn it over to Bert now.
Good evening. Um, just starting at the top, um, well, let me start at the bottom and go to the top. So the total cost request for the G M P is three point seven eight seven. This is a combination, um, of both hard and soft costs when, uh, Michael mentioned the guaranteed maximum, uh, price, that would be hard cost with Mueller Purcell, um, which is the second number that you see in front of you. So that contract would be with the, with the general contractor. So above that, one, one, nine, three hundred, that's the architect. Below that, as I just mentioned, is the three point oh three four, that is the general contractor. Fifteen thousand dollars for EarthCraft certification at the, the same board meeting or the one immediately after, I think. Michael mentioned, we, uh, were able to find some pretty significant efficiencies in obtaining a sustainable certification for the building, um, through EarthCraft in lieu of lead. That was a, um, like I said, pretty significant savings. Construction manager, the one, one, four, that's the program and project management that has been ongoing since last year through completion. The construction testing and special inspections as built, that is, um, a, a, a third party that ensures all of the Q A, Q C is conducted with, you know, things like, um, welds and soil compactions and things of that nature. Moving in storage, that is a, an allowance right now, uh, really just to get anything that would need to be salvaged out of the existing facility into temporary containers. Um, while the, the new facility is being built, we're projecting right now, that's going to be roughly an eight month duration. The technology, security and access control, that's been coordinated closely with the, um, Brook Run Park and, um, the vendors that control access and security and low voltage and audio visual. We've had a number of meetings to ensure that that allocation is, is appropriate. Furniture fixtures and site lighting, it's exactly what, what it says there. The majority of that is made up of the site lighting. Uh, that is one, uh, part of the construction management contract that would likely end up in their, in their, uh, excuse me, contract as well. So that gets you a total of three point four five two. Right now, we're carrying two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in owner contingency. That's roughly six percent. The asbestos and abatement allowance is just that, we did do some environmental testing and are expecting to have, um, some abatement and asbestos removed from the existing building. It's hard to determine an exact quantity at this point, but we believe that it's a responsible allowance based off of market feedback. And then the unsuitable soils and EarthCraft allowances, this is a combination. It's mostly unsuitable soils. You know, we keep it outside of the, the general contractors contingencies, because if we don't encounter anything there, then, you know, it all goes back to, to ownership. So we don't know, we don't know from a subsurface exploration standpoint, we have conducted geotechnical exploration. Some of that cost has been incurred to date, so we have done borings out there, but, um, you know, we haven't been able to do borings underneath, underneath the existing facility or on the entire, you know, plot of land. So once again, you never know if there's a pocket that you're going to have to deal with. So that gets us to the three point seven eight seven. Any questions related to that? There's pages that make up this.
I think we'll take two questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So real quickly to, uh, discuss funding here, uh, the previous allocated funding, the two point nine million you saw in the two slides before, how that total, uh, came up with. There's two items that we're, uh, uh, recommending, if you want to call it, for, for ways to fund this, uh, the capital fund balance of four hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then the, uh, unallocated capital fund balance contingency of three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Majority of that, when we, uh, established the budget for the Shaliford proceeds, we set aside one point seven million dollars as contingency unallocated capital. So we're proposing, this proposes to use some of that money to, to bridge this gap, basically. That would get us to the three point seven million total funding. Michael has some alternatives down there. We've identified a couple of alternatives in terms of some potential cost savings to get us to three point three million dollars. Using the contingencies would get us still that three point seven million dollars as well. So, um, those are the funding sources we've identified, uh, potentially, uh, bridging the gap to get to the three point seven million dollars in total. And that's it, I think. Michael, do you have any?
All right, question, Sean.
Richard, in our budget for the twenty twenty-five, um, I'm looking at page fifty-six. We have allocated in our budget, if I'm reading that correctly, one point five million for this project. So we are allocating one point five million for the budget for this building. And how much is it again?
Uh, three point seven.
So I think, I think that's all I need to know at this point. Thank you.
So to clarify and, and to get there, uh, the Georgetown Gateway Project, project four or five, I do not know what page number it's on. Uh, that, that's got about a million dollars left. The stormwater work, we're going to use the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in stormwater funds and the, from the building fire, the insurance proceeds of eighty-nine thousand. That's how we got to the two point nine million dollars available for this project.
But I, I think, John, the question you might have meant to ask is how did we get, was the estimate a year ago, one point five million, and now we're at three? Or, or do we already know we were using a million dollars from Georgetown a year ago?
No, I, I, I think it's been maybe two years or, or maybe a little more since that one point five million number was, was put out there and it really never was based on any, any kind of engineering or budget or anything. As I recall, it was maybe in, uh, at a retreat or in a meeting, I think it was, they, you know, we're talking about how to allocate money and the Parks Director at the time said, I mean, he kind of put a number out there, but it really wasn't based on any design or any, anything. And we've, we've looked at this project a couple of ways now. When we, when we put it out for proposals and selected Mueller Purcell, it was a two-story building. Actually similar in size to what we have, but they, they gave us feedback that the way it was laid out was, that there was a lot of money in building construction. So we, we rearranged it. We saved a little bit of money, but at the end, we, we kind of were coming back to the same place that to, to regrade that site and put in all the stormwater and infrastructure and to get the space that's really needed for the next fifty years, this, this is really the number.
So, um, I appreciate what John mentioned because that's my train of thought as well. So when I, I, I think this is a valid project. I don't discount the worthiness of this, but I think one of the biggest things for us to do in our jobs here is, is to deal with the public, the allocation of public funds. When the slide here says previously allocated funding, that was not voted or approved on by council. That was incorporated into a slide deck that was presented by staff as staff recommended, proposed. So that's still draft mode, number one. So I would like, I would prefer to identify, aside from this project, I would like to have an accounting of all of our unencumbered funds that are surplus. We, we're finding about these things. I'd like to find out where all of the other, what are the monies? Where do we have just unencumbered sur- surplus funds? That may be encumbered by certain, uh, project or unencumbered? And, and what are those totals, right? Because we're hearing these numbers here. I'd like to see that presented separately, so we have a good analytical, what is all of our cash, where we're sitting that, including our reserve. I understand we have operating reserve and so on. And then we had a huge capital projects committee in twenty twenty-three that met, that prioritized everything. So I, I would like to have council have a conversation about, okay, well, here's all of our bucket of money that is available. And this is one project of it. And, and have a holistic conversation of some unmet capital needs, and here's some surplus funds to, to do with them. So I just leaving that out there. Thank you.
I'll just toss out a comment on that because, um, uh, the, the Citizens Capital Committee, uh, we actually toured the current facility, uh, when we're going through the process and it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's rough. And that was before the fire. Uh, and, and the, that, that committee saw the value of this project for this. It's, it's not one of those sexy projects that you're going to go out there and everyone, you know, the community, community isn't going to enjoy it directly, but it's going to, uh, reap the rewards of what the city will be able to do in maintaining our streets and the parks. So it's, it's one of those necessary evils, kind of like an infrastructure thing. You put in a sewer pipe, it isn't sexy, but it's a lot less sexy when the sewer pipe doesn't work properly. So, um, I think it is an important part to maintain the things that we have in the city. And, and the committee did put this as one of the projects they saw, uh, great value in.
I just think it's really expensive. And I'm curious if, if I understand these are going to be metal buildings, like are we, are we picking the absolute worst time? I mean, I guess it could get worse. But are we picking, like if, if prices were here a year ago, are they now here? And maybe down the road, maybe they'll, I don't know. I'm asking the question about materials and maybe we should look at different materials or something. I don't know. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd say, um, a couple of things to that. One, the programmatically, I wanted to make one correction. Programmatically, we're, we're doing, um, a little bit less from a square footage perspective than what's currently there. So we tried to maximize the, the program, um, by reducing the square footage. That makes sense. That's why we ended up going from a two-story building to two single-story buildings. One of them has a substantial amount, well, really it has no permanent heating in there. It's the, it's the warehouse building itself that has permanent heating. And then the, the office space, um, is, you know, roughly twenty-five hundred square feet or a little bit more than that. Um, and that's heated and cooled. That, there was a lot of, a lot of value engineering that went into ensuring that we could at least match programmatically what is there now. It is better for the worker to, workers, it is more efficient for the city of Dunwoody. But we're doing that in a smaller space with two buildings to, in or, in order to maximize cost versus program. And answer your question about where we are today versus where we're going, I can't answer that question. I think that it's, you know, I, I can't answer that.
But it was, is it?
But I, 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 I do know that it has stabled out and it has been stable at least, you know, for the last year. In a sense, we're not seeing huge swings, but I can't say that that's going to maintain one, two, three months from now. You know, we haven't seen direct impacts in the last few weeks. We have, um, you know, this is a small enough scale to where we can get the materials, you know, relatively quickly. This is a, a schedule that is, you know, with the approval tonight would be done by the end of the year. Really, like I said, about an eight-month schedule into next year. So procuring the materials would happen in the next two to three months, which I think maxim, or it, uh, mitigates risk.
Stacy, your question?
Does the guaranteed maximum price protect the city of raw material increases, uh, regardless of what may happen to the cost of steel tomorrow? The price in this contract is, is set for the city?
I, I remember answering a very similar question at the last board meeting. It, it mitigates that risk in a big, big way. These contracts, no matter, you know, where you're building and what you're building, they have a force majeure contract or clause that oftentimes is pursued as a means for material escalation in unprecedented times. You know, once again, as soon as we can get those orders in, that risk goes away. So there's pretty strong language that helps us mitigate that, but I can't stand in front of the, the council and say for sure that a contractor or one of their suppliers isn't going to come with their hand out if, you know, something catastrophic happens or unprecedented happens.
Counselor Alon Mucker.
This question perhaps is for Rachel. The question I have is that if we have a building with the fire damage, how much is that impeding your servicing of the parks? And then, uh, I mean, versus waiting and using what you have for, for now, for years?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're limping along. We're doing, you know, what we can, but Michael and I have worked very closely. Um, we've gone through a lot of iterations to make sure this meets the needs of both departments. Um, lots of revamping on, like I think Michael said earlier, was like, we've got one chance to do this and then we're, you know, this is what we need for the long haul. But yeah, we've, we've looked at all that and it's like, I think Tom said, it's, it's not pretty now. It's, you know, we've got, I mean, it's a maintenance shop. But it's, it's got some great potential to, to be really what we need.
But you can, so you're saying you can live with the building for a while now?
If we had to.
If you.
I mean, but yeah, obviously the, the new scope would be ideal because, because again, it's when, when Michael showed the floor plan. Currently, my operations staff is at Homecoming Park in that white building. So we have to be prepared for the bill of that park because that's called out to be a community space and in which case those, those people have to have office space. So there's, there's kind of a lot at, at play here, looking for, making sure my guys have a place to go when they need to.
We just don't have any homecoming build out money. So that's years, right?
It's another, yeah, that'll be later.
Okay.
Out of number fourteen.
So, go ahead, Michael.
Just like to clarify something I said earlier, when talking about the history of this cost, I wasn't, I'm not, I don't think anything was, there were any mistakes or anybody did anything wrong. I just think two or three years ago, costs were a lot different and the one and a half million was kind of a guess at that point because it wasn't based on any kind of design or anything. I mean, when you look at the breakdown of the cost, just the site work before you even start building a building, they're estimating a little over a million dollars. So, I mean, that's a, that's a big part of the budget there. And so I think if, if the, if the goal, if it, if the goal was, we've got to cut a million dollars out of this project, the way, the only way to do that would be to take out the office building, um, which goes back to what Rachel said is that, you know, those, the park staff would need a home. And then I don't know about the contract staff, are they at Homecoming also? Or are they, they're, I guess they're in the existing building. So, so even if, even by taking out the office building, we'd have to build in some space for the, the contractors that are on site. So we'd probably have to make the, the other building a little bigger, which cuts down on how much money we'd actually save.
I, I'd be curious to know how much money we would save. It's, uh, just because it, it just feels expensive, which I think it is expensive. I think everything is expensive right now. But, but we have those, we have two houses at Homecoming that are able to be offices. We, yes, we are, but we also have Homecoming. So, anyway, go ahead, John. Do we, no, nothing? Okay. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll just, yeah, I think part of the shock is the price is not what we're expecting. But that's not going to get better in time. The, the estimate for Homecoming, we're going to see a little bit later. In just two years has gone up a million dollars. Um, so, you know, building cost inflation, I mean, in times that aren't as economically uncertain are pretty consistently going up. And Atlanta is usually one of the top cities in the nation. I know they, we typically average about twelve percent a year in building cost inflation in Atlanta, uh, for construction. So, uh, So, um, you know, it's just, I, I, the, the price is expensive and we've got to figure out how to, if the, if the, if we have the funds available to do this, um, but the price isn't going to go down waiting.
But my question kind of is, is it the same price would pay for the septic to sewer connection at Homecoming? I'm just saying the extra one and a half million. I mean, whether it was, I'm not criticizing and certainly I understand Michael's point. I mean, everyone is right. There's nothing wrong here. It's an expensive project. It feels like we ought to take a second to figure out if this is how we want to spend this capital money, or if there's something else more pressing that it should be spent on. That's all I'm saying. And I totally understand the need and I want to meet the needs of the city. And this could end up being the project that we think we should invest in. But I'm just throwing it out as a possibility that we might want to take a second to think about it.
I think this gets back then to Joe's comment earlier. I mean, we, we mentioned at the retreat that we were going to do a, a kind of relook at our capital projects and we haven't done that yet. And now, I mean, we're to a project that we need, um, I think, um, and at a price that's a little bit difficult to swallow. But i- if we're going to postpone those, I think we need to be looking at the capital projects soon, like next meeting or as quick as we can. So that this, if this, if we decide to go forward with this, that it doesn't stall anymore. I mean, this, this situation isn't getting any better, waiting month after month after month.
Yeah, and for me to, to, to a yes, is have that big picture conversation of looking at all of our funds and say, okay, here's, here's where we can, here's what we can do in the next two years or whatever.
Eric, do you think we could have that capital conversation at our next meeting?
Sure, if, if that's what Joe would like, Mayor, we can certainly bring that to you in May. If you allow us to look at the two meetings in May to see, I don't want to, I want to bring it to you, but I want it to be accurate.
Right.
So if that's okay, we can certainly bring that in May. I would just recommend y'all defer this or table whatever legal recommends until we have a chance to look at that.
That's fine, um, I guess. Um, I'll let somebody else make a motion for that. How much, um, money have we already put into this project?
Let's see. Oh, uh, probably somewhere around 150,000, I would say.
And that's for the design?
Design and, yeah.
Engineering.
And then, um, our contract with the guaranteed maximum price, does that have an end date? Like, is it finite?
You want to talk about how long you think we have before it changes?
Yeah, are you talking about the, the, who asked that question? I thought, uh, the, are you talking about the overall project schedule or, or the?
Guaranteed maximum price contract.
Yeah, it's through the project schedule, which right now they're projecting to be January 2026. So it, so the GMP is tied to a schedule and a duration. And that goes through January 2026. Did I answer the question?
No, when can we last sign it? When is it last open to sign the contract?
Oh, how long will they, they hold their price?
Yes.
Probably 30 days, if that, the, they've, they have communicated to us in recent coordination meetings that, you know, potential steel costs are rising. And the sooner they can get their P O in for the pre-engineered metal building, it would be capped. It just goes back to your question. So the, the sooner we can do that, the faster we can cap. But industry standard would be for them to hold it till 30 days, but I can't say that definitively.
Well, this is an action item.
Right.
And if we can, yep, we can vote on it at present.
Somebody has to make a motion. I mean, at any time the micro, microphone is available for y'all.
Yeah, simply because if we deem the project important, we can look at them all and still deem it important and lose this contract.
I'd like to add one more thing, just as a refresher to our previous meetings here. So we did put this out to market and estimated it last year. And that was, we had great participation and we ended up getting over five proposals. So this has been competitively bid. We've been working with this contractor to try and maximize that price and maximize that program. But I think it's worth noting, they've been holding a lot of the pricing for a long time as we refine this.
So what you're saying is, is the project as designed is going to cost with contingency 3.78, 700,080, whatever, 3.8 million dollars. And that, you're confident that that's a good price because of the process that we've been through?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the question is, in my mind, is not about whether the price is good. The question in my mind is about whether we can afford it in light of other needs. And if there's not a way to come back with, obviously you're not going to build wooden buildings. And I'm not even sure that would be cheaper, but that seems a little dangerous for our maintenance facility. Right? Miss Oleary's cow. And, um, and so you know, counsel, this is an action item. Do something or do nothing, but someone, I, I don't make motions.
I move to approve.
I second.
Move by Catherine, second by Stacy. Any further discussion?
I just turned my mic on because I have not yet decided how I'm going to vote. And I'm just saying that it's, this is not an easy question. I mean, because in, in a better world, we would wait, but I think I'm, I'm kind of leaning that we ought to approve it, that, that this is a need we have in the city. We know we have, it's a need. And we have deteriorating conditions that we're also trying to address. So it's not just a need, it's a, um, a problem that also needs to be addressed at the same time. We have inadequate facilities. So I, I guess I'm leaning yes.
Can I ask a question? It's really probably for Michael or I forgot your name, I'm sorry. Is it possible for us, for this to be approved tonight with an instruction to go back and look at adding an office to one, the one building and not building the office building? Or is that the wrong way to do it?
I would.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to get myself to yes.
I did, I did mention to Michael, um, you know, just now, and, and he knows this very well. We've been through multiple iterations with the design team on different scenarios to maximize this price. We've been luckily kept them at their fee. So we looked at two different scenarios of a one-story building and a handful of scenarios with a, you know, single-story two buildings. So this is, um, we would be looking at additional design fees and potential, you know, additional engineering fees if we continue to explore this. Just as a heads up.
I would just like to add, I know we're, you know, we, we still want at the whole umbrella of the capital improvement thing. This is, this was vetted by the capital committee. We've talked about this for a long time. We have our city staff operating in a building that has had a fire in it. So in my mind, you know, we talked about needs and wants. This is a, this is a need. It is not sexy. It's like stormwater, you know, we'll probably, most of the public will never see it. But in my mind, this is a need. And if we need to, I don't want to say need to do it, but we're at a place where we have to do this now, or we don't know what's going to happen down the road. Um, and we have a contract and we have a guaranteed price.
I think there's a motion on the floor. Who seconded you? You made it. Stacy seconded. All right, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Um, all opposed, say no.
Aye.
That passes four to three, Sharon. Thank you. All right. Next.
Item number 10 is renewal of property and liability insurance with Germa, Delicia Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Delicia Robinson, work with the Department of Finance here at City of Dunwoody. I'm here requesting approval for the annual renewal of the city's property and liability insurance coverage with Germa. The new policy is one year and is scheduled to take effect or renew May 1st, 2025. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. When comparing the 2025 policy to 2024, there's about a $58,000 increase in the total premium, which is equivalent to about an 8.4% increase. Also wanted to mention that we budgeted a 12% increase this year for our 2025, um, in premiums. So with that increase coming in at 8.4%, um, we're going to have, have a $25,000 below budget. Finally, I wanted to say that we, um, our staff did meet with Germa about the coverage and terms and recommend the approval of our property liability renewal with Germa. If you have any questions.
Questions? Catherine.
Hi, I have a question about the auto. I know that the memo said that Germa is, has a general increase for all members, all members. Is there anything in particular that is leading to our increase that would be above the all-member increase?
Yes, uh, so we've, we've added multiple new police, police vehicles to our fleet, bringing the total to 33 vehicles that are 2024 newer, newer model. These are intended to replace the aging fleet. And also our auto bodily injury claims from auto accidents are higher than, uh, previous years.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, yeah, so when I look, when I look at these types of things, I try to often review contracts like I would if this was some, like I do in my own life, right? And so, uh, with insurance, we all have insurance for a variety of things in our lives. And I periodically review my own insurance to see, hey, is this still meet my needs? Because insurance is really just risk management, right? It's how much, how much financial risk am I willing to take in the event that something does or doesn't happen at some point in the future? And a lot of times I'll review my auto policy and say, you know what? It's nice to have, but is it worth me spending that much money for in something? So this is a big, big contract and the, the point I'm going to bring up is, is really small. I, I sent, sent you, uh, an email earlier today. I got a quick response. I appreciate staff responding to me. Uh, it was just one particular clause that just got me thinking about how, when we review our policies, what fits in and what doesn't. The one that kind of jumped out to me was a police animal mortality clause or, or coverage, which obviously was our canine units. And just to be clear, this does nothing to protect our canines. This is just in the event that one of them was injured or killed in the line of duty, that veterinary bills and, um, any other expenses and replacement up to $15,000, uh, would be covered. And what, what I looked at with that is we're paying $2,000 a year for a $15,000 benefit that may or may not happen. And is that, is that money well spent? I don't know. Is it, or is that a risk that the city can take in the event that, God forbid, one of our canines was injured or killed in the line of duty? Is that a cost that the city would be able to absorb and not necessarily have to pay $2,000? And then again, I know the 2,000 is a small number. I don't know if when, when we review the contract, we looks at those, we look at those types of things or if this even came up. Is that something that, uh, was reviewed with any?
It did not.
Okay.
And, and, and just, Tom, can I, can I help too?
Yeah.
Not getting into the, uh, the sums or anything, but one of the things Richard asked us to do is look at the policy. I sent it out to outside our policy council who reviewed it. Also sent back questions to Germa through Richard and staff. And one about, is there anything significant about our policy compared to other cities? I wanted to know that. And the answer was no. Second, we have with Germa the ability to control council, which is nice, as long as it's on their approval list and not otherwise conflicted. And they said no changes there. So I'm not debating the 15 versus two, but the policy seems to be consistent with what they write for the cities as a broad stroke. But without respect to the specific question, it's a policy legal recommends after we had it reviewed on the outside as well.
Okay, I mean, I know.
Not on that particular.
And a big majority seems like nitpicking, but just when you're looking at contracts, you know, we're, we're, are we paying for things that aren't, aren't necessarily of value to the city? And, and just to be clear, there's a separate under the general liability. Any liability involved with, uh, the canine units is, is covered under the, I, I, at least I've been instructed is covered under the general liability. So that's not, that's a separate issue. But this is not something that I want to hold up or ring our insurance of. Perhaps it's maybe something that next year we take a deeper look at. I just wanted to kind of bring it to the forefront to make sure that we're reviewing the contracts, um, you know,
I think we have to have a conversation with the people that paid for the dogs because we did not pay for the dogs. The police foundation paid for the dogs. And so I think that, you know, we would have, we never found the money in our budget to buy the dogs because the dogs were a gift. So I think that one more year of insuring them until we make sure we know how to do it. I do have one question. Is tech not, like, isn't, is, like, if we get hacked, is that covered in this policy? Or do we have a different policy for that? I don't know. Go ahead.
Yes, it's in this.
Okay, that's all I wanted. All right, anybody, John, go ahead.
Just a follow-up to a city attorney. So you've reviewed the coverage and our coverage meets the minimum liability to where it's appropriate for legal action, for lawsuits and things like that, where other coverage comes into play?
Including sovereign immunity. They, they build it around the sovereign immunity exception. That's correct.
All right, so we are at the maximum limits that where we would be responsible for up to sovereign.
Well, I think the limits, I didn't have anything to do with the limits, so I, I want to make sure that's clear. We are simply rolling the prior limits, which have seemed to have been fine so far. But I, I wanted to make sure I knew how's it compared to everybody else? And it seems to compare based on the responses we got back. And when I had counsel, uh, review it, that did not come back as a red flag. But yes, John, Germa actually builds the policy around the concept of sovereign immunity, meeting the statutory requirements. That's correct.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you, sir.
All right, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by John. Second by Rob, Tom. All in favor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Sharon.
Item number 11 is approval of a six-month trial agreement with Flock Safety, Chief Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me, this, uh, this was actually proposed, uh, at the last council meeting when I was out of town. After speaking with the city attorney, uh, in regards to, uh, the contract with Flock, the one clause that was missing was an opt-out clause that council member Lambert pointed out. After speaking with the city attorney, um, this has been added into the Flock contract. So the initial six-month agreement, um, uh, will be towards the end of the year. However, we do have a clause that we can opt out, which will be 100,000. And, uh, this will automatically renew, uh, at the beginning of '26 to the end of, end of the year, with another $200,000 annual fee for that. However, the clause will cover the six months here and for the recurring costs, uh, in next year. I won't take any questions.
Tom, just so, I want to make sure it's clear for the agenda that they, we started a pilot already. The six months starts July 1st to the end of the year. Then it rolls into 12 months at the current pricing. So you owe 100,000 on July 1st, but you can opt out anytime now through the end of the year with 30 days' notice. Next year automatically rolls over, except if you do not fund it for next year, there's a funding provision opt-out. So you actually have two opt-outs and next year's price will be 200,000. But the exact language I wanted, uh, the, uh, I started to say the drone people, the flock people essentially copied what I typed up and put it in as a special exception to this contract. So you can opt out anytime between now and December 31st, '25. If it's past July 1st, you won't get your money back for the July 1st payment. If you fund it for next year, it'll automatically roll at current prices for next year through the end of that year, '26.
Move to approve.
Move by Tom, second by Catherine. Any further discussion or questions? John, go ahead and then I have.
Chief, can you tell me more? This is being funded out of, uh, police officer funding. So I'm guessing it's, you're using the float based on vacant positions and what the current budget is. What's, how much money do we have? You're spending 100,000 of whatever the float is. What are, what's the estimated amount of money that we have being floated right now?
That would be a question for Mr. Plato. I'm not sure of the exacts. That would be a question for, uh, Mr. Plato. I'm not sure of the exact, because right now we have five openings, uh. Uh, for personnel in the police department, but I'm not sure the breakdown of each one.
It just so happened that at the end of March, we had a hundred thousand dollars, uh, float that we've recognized so far this year. Based on the vacancies. So, um, I don't have an estimate right now based, obviously. Depends on how many vacancies they ultimately end up with, uh, each month or whatever. But generally speaking, based on the five vacancies that we've had each month for the first three months. It's been approximately thirty thousand dollars.
And then that, uh, once that hundred thousand is then siphoned off to go towards the drone. Is there any impact on police manpower, including overtime in the next six months regarding this budget item?
I did not anticipate that. No, uh, so, um, again, we budgeted every position for twelve months for a full year. If the position was vacant, we budgeted the the highest, uh, uh, insurance rate and everything. So, uh, we we assumed full, uh, contribution of retirement. And everything. So we have captured all the costs we possibly could. Uh, I don't anticipate there being any issues.
That's a perfect answer and Richard always commendable. I I love the budget being very conservative in nature and sticking to our budget. But thank you, I'm, you've gotten my answer. We're good for the police department. We're gonna fund our police department. The hundred thousand is gonna be siphoned off because we have vacancies and put it towards the drone for the next six months. In a few months, we'll be looking at the next year's budget and decide moving forward. So thank you.
Are we get, are you gonna develop like a policy manual for the drone or have you already done that? I know we're, I hear it on the roof. So I know.
Yes, ma'am, we've already done that.
Okay, alright. And it probably addresses some concerns about private people's privacy and stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, right? Okay, all in favor? Was there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, chief.
The next item is discussion of House Bill ninety two, Richard Plato.
Good evening. So we have actually just received information last week, actually got information about House Bill ninety two on Friday, as a matter of fact. So. This is all very new information. We're still working to digest it. Uh, and there's one particular part I wanted to focus on of. Of House Bill ninety two during this discussion. So it's not a complete overview of the whole bill or anything like that. There's one particular part. Just very brief, brief background here. Uh, I'm, I made some notes because it is all so new. So if I read, I apologize. But I wanted to make sure I captured, I talked about all this stuff. Um. And so this bill, House Bill ninety two, was signed into law on April first of twenty twenty five. It applies to all, uh, tax years twenty twenty five and onwards. Uh, and it was basically, for lack of a better word, a cleanup of House Bill five eighty one, which was approved in two thousand twenty four. So there's a specific part that I wanted to talk about with this house bill tonight, and that is the estimated rollback rate. Um, it's a new concept that was created in House Bill five eighty one, and then was revised in House Bill, uh, ninety two. And it added a deadline that we have to provide an estimated rollback rate to the Tax Commissioner's Office or Taxing Authority by. In this instance, uh, DeKalb is gonna send out the notice of annual assessments. May thirtieth is there, based on their target, uh, calendar right now. They asked that we provide our estimated rollback rate. To be included on those notice of annual assessments by May twelfth. So that is why there's some urgency, why I wanted to come before you tonight and talk about this. Estimated rollback rate, we have two options. We can, uh, US Council can certify a rollback rate that's included on the NOA. And, uh. The, the part of the drawback, I guess, for lack of a better word, to this is that if we estab, if we certify that estimated rollback rate. Then the estimated amount of taxes owed will not show up on, uh, property owners' NOA. Option two, we, if we do not certify an estimated rollback rate, then the previous year's millage rate will show up. And it, and an estimate of the property taxes owed will show up on a, on a, uh. Homeowners or property owners, uh, in a way. So those are the two options. Staff's thoughts and recommendations are that since the twenty twenty five budget was built on three point oh four mills. We are making an assumption that that's the rate that will be levied. Uh, so we do not feel that it's transparent. To not include an estimated tax on an NOA and are thus recommending that we, uh, uh. Do not certify an estimated, uh, estimated millage rate. Uh, so that in a nutshell is House Bill ninety two. I will note. We are still going to go through our normal budget pri, uh, normal, uh, millage calculation process that includes the three hearings. All the appropriate advertising and then later on, May and June, we will adopt the official, uh, if you want to call it that, millage rate. But they have asked to provide this estimated millage rate. And in the instance for the DeKalb Taxi Commissioner, they asked for us to provide it by May twelfth. And again, based on the two options that we have, our recommendation is option two, to not certify anything. And that way, the three point oh four mills will show up on property tax bills, notice of assessments that go out later this month. And there will be a calculation of the estimated taxes owed. I will attempt to answer any questions. Again, there's a lot of new information.
Uh, go ahead.
This is the screwiest bill I think I've seen in the law.
That is a true statement.
I'm gonna honestly go with your recommendation. If we're providing more clarity to this, to the citizens, that's the option I want. So whatever it. Whatever gives them the best information is what I'm in favor of.
So I think this is a reaction of the legislature to the fact that so few governments opted in to five eighty one. And we, we opted in, but they didn't make any exceptions or address those of us that opted in. And so that's what this is about. So anyway, it doesn't mean that it's a good. Common language bill, or it says what they think it says or anything like that. Go ahead. Anybody else have questions? John?
When do the valuations come in? When will we know whether the tax digest went up or down and whether staying at the same millage rate? Will go up or down?
So the, according to the Tax Commissioner's, um, uh, projected digest calendar. May first is when the Board of Assessors approves the twenty twenty five real estate values. So that would be Wednesday or Thursday, Thursday. Uh, we are hoping to get values by Friday, May second.
You can't do that other work until you get all that anyway, right? If it goes down.
Correct.
Alright.
Correct, yes. So, so we will not, uh, being calculating, we will have to use that data to calculate a rollback rate, basically. The other, and I didn't touch on it, there, the other, um, uh, notice, I guess, on here that, uh. Made our, we've had some concern about also. So if you do certify an estimated rollback rate, and I'm trying to find the language, sorry. Uh, if you certify an estimated rollback rate. And I'm going to use numbers here that are made up and would not be our final bill, that has no, just for, uh, example purposes only. So if we turn in an estimated rollback rate of, let's say, two point eight five, but then we end up adopting a three mil rate. If the, uh, our adopted rate exceeds the estimated rollback rate. Then on people's property tax bills that they get would be a disclaimer that. In this case, the city had done what? He exceeded the estimated rollback rate and that this result in an increase of taxes owed. And we were, our thought is to avoid having that placed on people's property tax bills and go with what we believe will be levied. Uh, and turn that in as part of this estimated.
Interesting concept. So let me understand this. We're gonna get the values gonna, gonna go up. There's gonna be a proposed rollback that we're not gonna certify. And therefore the citizens are gonna get a notice saying that your taxes are gonna go up. The three percent or whatever the valuation went up. And then later on. If we were to raise our millage rate, it would be another notice saying they not only, there'd be another notice saying that we did something more, right? Not that we can raise our millage rate, because again, we're at the maximum, but if our total tax bill went up in any way, shape or form. That would also be. Uh, different than what was initially said during that piece of paper then, right?
Correct. So, uh, we will eventually be able to calculate, uh, we will get from the DeKalb. Uh, Tax Commissioner's Office, the, all the documents needed to calculate our, our rollback rate. And then if we do adopt, for argument's sake, three point oh four, the rollback rates, two point eight five. We will have to advertise that as a tax increase. Yes, you are correct.
I just, it's, there's transparency aspect, but. It's problem, it could be problematic long term for us as well on several different fronts. So thank you. It's not easy to understand, but thank you.
Go ahead, Rob. Uh, but we've, we have to, they've made it so that if, the only way you don't have to advertise the meetings is if your digest doesn't grow, which. Actually, I kind of think is a possibility for this coming year. I know that everyone else at City Hall is kind of skeptical of that, but. My guts telling me something else because the big property owners hire big attorneys to appeal their valuations. So, um. And as a reminder, most, a big chunk of Dumbwoody homeowners, uh, bought their houses a long time ago. And it doesn't matter what happens to their appraised value, assessed value, their rates don't go up. And. One thing that could be an advantage particularly for us is that it sounds like maybe the school board. And the county are going to. Not include their data. So that means they're gonna vote to certify the something, right? And which means that the only thing people will see on that bill is their city taxes, which could be very helpful for people, I think, to understand. Because when people get their whole bill, even that estimate or the assessment. There's so much data on there. It's very hard to see what you're paying for each line. And so I, I think that could actually be kind of helpful for us. Um. And we've had to, except for the few years where we've not had any growth in the digest, we've had to advertise for that meeting. Every year that legislature was supposed to fix that, and instead they did this.
Go ahead.
I want to make sure that I understand what you're saying and kind of what you're saying. If you. Opt, I don't know. What is opt in or out?
Opt in and opt out was three.
So if. Well, what are we? Okay, so if we, if we vote. Um, what is, what's determined? Okay, so if we vote to certify, then there's gonna be no data on somebody's property tax bill, no estimate of their property taxes.
On their notice of.
On their notice of assessment.
Correct.
But if we vote to.
Not.
No action, no, we vote to take no action, then there will be. An estimate of the property taxes that they would pay to the city on their bill.
It would revert back to the rate that was encoded last year on their tax bill, which was the three point oh four, and it would show an estimate of the property taxes due. Yes.
So if.
Okay, so just when we get, because this is a business item, we're either gonna vote to. Certify or take, we're gonna vote to take no action, which is kind of an absurd thing to do as well, but.
If, if I can jump, so a, a second question, let's imagine another scenario. Let's say that instead of our digest sitting flat. We somehow experience a boom year. And we decide, hey, you know, we, we, we took no action, we told everybody it was gonna be three point oh four, but now that we look at it, we can do three. Are there implications in that with this?
My understanding is subject to changes. We do more research, but my understanding is if you, if your estimated tax, what you include on your notice of assessment and your estimated tax rate. Is three point oh four and we come in lower at three, um, uh, is what's actually placed on the tax bill. We would not be punished. There want to be language on there that says we decreased our property taxes or anything like that, so.
To me, then we let folks know, hey, this is the most you probably will pay and. We know, we hope for just some phenomenal growth in our digest, so maybe we don't have to do that.
But yes, reminder that for homeowners again, unless they bought their house this year. Or they own a second home in Georgia that they're taking their homestead exemption on. Their value, even if they bought it this year, as long as they filed, well, I guess they had the one year and they filed for their homestead. Most people, except for the very new homeowners, are gonna see the same number as they saw last year.
Correct.
Right, so, but, but they don't see it because the bill is so cluttered. So this is actually helpful, I think.
Richard, if, so this notice of assessment, this is, this is your tax bill that people get. I think.
No, it's not your tax bill. It's the estimate of the valuation of your house.
So, um, do, does a homeowner get just one and it also includes the county and school? In the same piece of paper?
That is correct, yes.
And so that physical paper layout and verbiage. It's gonna get a little messy if people, if the county's doing something different, then the school's doing different and the city's doing something different regarding this bill. Uh, House Bill in the presentation of the.
That is, that is a correct statement. So, uh, as part of this bill also changed how the notice of assessments will be presented. So. Uh, and that's the information we got on Friday, actually, late Friday. Uh, that's the information we got. So there's a, a standard format that'll have the three. Taxing authorities, schools, county and city on it. If everybody certifies, if all those three entities or municipalities certifies. Then, uh, their assessed value will be on there, but there won't be any, uh, estimated property taxes included on that. Uh, if all three entities certify. If it's not certified, they would go to a hybrid notice of assessment. Which at the top will have the entities that did not certify and at the bottom. And so the top, again, if they, if they certified, they will not have any property taxes calculated. And at the bottom of this hybrid assessment will be, uh, the entities that did not certify and thus will calculate. Property taxes, uh, um, estimated owed for the year. Yes, very confusing bill. We, our, our gut feeling is that this was geared toward, uh, municipalities that do indeed rollback every year. Maybe some of the smaller municipalities in South Georgia and stuff like that, that use the rate, uh, they already, they can calculate the rate. They have a thousand homes in there, so they're in businesses and they, they can calculate, they roll back, so they know what their rate's gonna be. So they can calculate it included on their estimated rate. The advantage is if your estimated rate and your, uh. Your estimated rollback rate and your actual rollback rate come in at the same, then there's some advantages. Maybe you don't have to do the public hearings and the advertising and things like that. So. I think it was geared more toward our first gut reaction as to doing the, reading through this and doing research is that it was geared maybe toward people that do. Historically rollback every year.
So interesting also, they're gonna have to put on the DeKalb bill that the school system opted out of five eighty one.
That is correct, yes.
So, I guess that'll be on the, I don't, yeah, it'll be in the assessment.
I believe.
Be a very cluttered piece of paper.
Yes, it will be.
But we opted in and DeKalb opted in, so they won't say that about us. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I move that we follow, uh, staff recommendation and do not certify, um, under this legislation.
Second.
Move by Rob, second by Stacy. Any further discussion or questions? Um, I think this is the most transparent option. I think people getting a bill that doesn't tell them an estimated how much they're gonna owe on their property taxes. To plan is just terrible. Alright, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you for your deep dive. Alright, Paul, you are up.
Now my head is hurting.
Right.
Two puppies and kittens, um. Yeah, the good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Um, this is, uh, um, ordinance that demands chapter six. Of, uh, the municipal code, which is, uh, the animals section. To promote the adoption of rescue animals and prohibits, um, certain pet sales. This is, um, a follow up to the recently adopted ordinance on transient pet sales. And Councilman Second, I think, proposed this, um, and then requested this to move forward. Um, what this does, it prohibits, uh, pet sales of cats and dogs at. At pet stores. Now I'll go into a little bit, little bit more detail, um, what this means and. And why it's proposed. Um, these, uh, pet sales for, for especially dogs and cats. Are associated with several undesirable characteristics. Um, one is sort of from a, from a pet humane standpoint that these. Types of puppies and kittens are often sourced from puppy mill type operations. So that they're growing up in an environment that's not conducive to, um, to humane conditions. Um, and that's regarding veterinary, veterinary care, food, water, socialization. These types of places are tied to, um, health and behavioral issues. That can also impact staff at these stores and customers, um. And that examples could be, uh, vaccination schedules that aren't met, um. And, uh, there are sort of studies that show that diseases, especially from puppies, have spread. Um, towards, uh, the people who end up buying these animals, um. In addition, and as probably especially in the pandemic, when it became sort of more popular to, um. To have cats or, or dogs at home. Um, we have in Georgia, like animal shelters that are overflowing. Uh, the same is true in DeKalb County. Uh, the county has recently approved the overflow facility, um, at public expense at the, uh, DeKalb County Animal Shelter. Um, and what this means in, in practice is that. And what this means in, in practice is that some of these are intended to be run as no kill shelters. But because they're run at capacity is that they have to euthanize, um, animals at the shelters too. So best case scenario would be if people would adopt these ti, these animals, um, so, so they don't have to be, um, euthanized. And, um, reputable breeders, um, tend to, or like generally do not sell their, um, animals to pet stores. And you have organizations like the American Kennel Society, which is sort of the umbrella organization for um, species, uh, specific breeders has that in their code of ethics, like the different organizations that are sort of breed specific, you know, for, for bulldogs, for golden retrievers, you know, what have you. They generally have their code of ethics. If you're a, a recognized breeder, you're not allowed to sell your animals to pet stores. Um, what the ordinance does, it, um, it defines pet stores and then prohibits the sale of dogs and cats in these stores. That it defined as like any retail store that sells cats and dogs. So, uh, Councilman Harris has, has, um, has talked to me before the meeting and it is indeed a circular sort of reference, uh, that a retail store or like a pet store, as per this ordinance, is any store that sells cats and dogs and then cat and dog, dog deal is prohibited. Um, the ordinance itself doesn't, no, nothing else references the term. It's in chapter six. It's not part of the zoning ordinance. So from a legal standpoint, that, that's not a, it's, it's not an issue. We had that reviewed by, um, by, by the legal team. But we can, we can certainly change the language, uh, to next time. Um, this is of course not, not supposed to impact, uh, pet adoptions and and all the sale by, by individual breeders. It is just intended for retail stores like a, a PetSmart or, or a similar type operations. Um, and we would continue to allow like the PetSmart that we have in, in Dunwoody has, uh, a pet, pet adoption within the store and that will also continue to be allowed. So no impact on, on those types of um, endeavors. And again, the, the goal here is, um, is not to, um, then not have, have the residents have, uh, puppies or kittens, but it is to uh, support adoption from, uh, existing facilities, um, instead of sort of accidentally or inadvertently supporting these puppy mill type operations. And violations as per this ordinance can be punished with up to $500 per dog or cat for sale. And the ordinance has a process where, um, uh, a, a store would need to, um, uh, maintain records sort of of the individual animals if they're having those for adoption. With this, I'll, I'll, um, I'll finish my presentation. Um, we're recommending adoption and uh, this would come back. There is no action required today. It would come back as an action item on May 12th.
All right, Sharon has to read the title, sorry.
In order to amend chapter six to promote adoption of rescue animals.
Okay, questions? Go ahead, Rob.
I guess I have just a couple of clarifying questions. Um, one, looking at the penalties, uh, there's a mention that we have to post a sign for each dog or cat if you're going to have an adoption. Could you post if, let's say that all of the animals are from the same rescue, just post one sign? These pets are from, or your future pets are all from whatever rescue? Or do they have to print off a whole bunch of eight and nine by 11 sheets on every?
That, that, it's the second because there's an age requirement too. And that's generally what these places do also, you know, that's, that's generally what.
They have it. They have it already on the cattle usually.
And then my, my second question is i- if there's a resident who is a, a breeder of a specific kind of dog and sells them from their house, they would not fall under this definition, correct?
Would not fall under this. It's only for retail stores.
Okay, thank you.
Sean.
This came up, uh, recently and we discussed it. At the time though, I believe we had a store over there by Walmart that was selling pets. That is no longer in business, correct?
The owners retired, yeah.
And now we have, uh, PetSmart. Tell me what's happening at PetSmart. It's not a store I go into very often. Do they sell cats and dogs?
So they do not sell. They're partnering with the organization that's
Adoption.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so right now, today, we have, to the best of my knowledge, I'm asking your opinion, do we have any businesses that are currently allowed to sell cats and dogs? Is there anyone that we're impacting or grandfathering in? What's the impact right now for the businesses in place today?
And nobody does it currently, to my knowledge. So there's no impact, um, on anyone. This would be for future stores.
Okay, so we're outlawing something that doesn't exist today?
Correct.
Okay. You've pretty much answered all my questions. Um, I'm good. Thank you so much. Again, we've already taken action on the roadside. Now we're taking it on this. I think that closes the loop and as long as we're not impacting any businesses or grandfathering somebody who can then double their whatever. I'm good. Thank you.
By else. Can this be consent or does it have to be, it's a second read, but I can, can a second read be consent? Okay, is consent okay? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, this one I can read, right? It's Rachel Waldron on Homecoming Park.
Good evening. Um, so this is just a follow-up to the item that we discussed at the retreat, um, more of a formal view, if you will. Um, again, just a summary of where we've been with Homecoming Park. Um, when we purchased, excuse me, purchased a parcel several years ago, um, we worked with Pond and Company to develop the current master plan, um, lots of public, um, input meetings, um, survey data. Um, the current master plan was adopted in April of 2023. Um, and then last fall, um, I started receiving emails, um, from a group that was trying to get, um, beach volleyball or sand volleyball, if you will, in Dunwoody. Um, this started last fall. Um, they, they ranged, um, 350 positive responses, uh, most of which were, um, ages 17 years or younger, the kind of high school age. Um, and what sparked this is it's Burke, Burke Run is, was initially supposed to have sand volleyball. Um, I think we can all agree that it's, it's pretty built out as it is. We don't really need to add anything else in there, um, which started the conversation, um, about getting this in another park. Currently shown, the amenity that they would like to switch out would be pickleball, um, which is currently shown. We have a overlay at Purnashur Park, Windward Hollow Park, Waterford Park. Um, and it is shown in the Wildcat Park master plan. So I think we're good on, on pickleball. Sand volleyball is something our agency is not able, um, to offer, uh, like other, other agencies. Um, and just again, a review of current master plan, um, what we're looking at is, is amenity number eight, um, which is the pickleball courts. Um, that is the only thing we're, we're looking at tonight. So basically you, the pickleball courts would come out, sand volleyball would go in. Um, and then I've got a couple of numbers here. We've, we've looked at a very high level, um, estimated construction cost between the two, estimated year one maintenance, um, to year four maintenance, just so that way we have the whole picture. Um, so you've got a couple of figures in front of you. It is, it is fairly close. Um, it is pretty comparable in overall price and maintenance. Um, so really the, the, the question I'm here tonight is because we've had a community response and community request for this, this is really just a, a public discussion, if you will, if this is something you would, would like to look at, if you'd like to, um, review the master plan again and, and see the potential for sand volleyball. I can start that process. Um, this is a very high level approach. This is not, I understand where we are with, with funding. I'm asking for $6 million tonight. This is just, um, just to review the current plan. And if it's something the community wants, if, um, I can start, you know, public input meetings, all of that again with the sand volleyball option.
Um, questions or comments, John?
Rachel, thank you for this. Um, my only real comment or question comes to do with lighting. I'm not seeing anything in the document. Was there plans for lights on the pickleball courts and the hours of operation? And where is there lights on the sand volleyball hours of operation? What's the difference?
So they weren't, they're not dedicated for the courts. Um, they would be the peripheral of the park that we see in other places. We could look at dedicated lights, but we would have to be cognizant of, of course, all the neighbors that are surrounding.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, you're, I'm looking at the map. It's directly, it's, uh, it's really close to the street scape. It's, um, if the neighborhood thought that there would be lights on the pickleball courts, then that's a discussion moving forward that we're just changing out the sand for the pickle and the, the lights are the same. But so there is no dedicated lights on the pickleball court and now there's going to be no dedicated lights on the sand. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Catherine.
What changes with the, the change to the field size? You've gone from a rectangle to a, I'm not sure, you know, something odd. So is it, does that prohibit regular soccer play or lacrosse or anything?
No, it cuts it. I forget what the dimensions are, um, that, let me see. So the open play field with pickleball is 245 by 145. And sand is a 160 by 160 because it does cut just a teeny bit, but nothing drastic. So yes, you would still have the open play meadow for, for pickup soccer and things like that.
The question is, is it regulation size for any, any age? A regulation field?
No, it's just an open play field is what we're calling it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Not, not striped or anything like that.
Okay.
Any files? Go ahead, Rob.
Uh, so I, I have, I guess, a couple of different questions and comments. Um, first one deals with, um, stormwater. So underneath the open play field was going to be basically infiltration and kind of a little stormwater collection basin. Does this, will we still be able to have the same capacity of stormwater collection? Because one thing I was hoping would happen when this park finally got built out was that we might even be able to put extra stormwater control there because the neighborhoods, um, in Village Mill, um, adjacent to this park property get a lot of, they have issues with stormwater. So anything we can do to kind of control upstream of them would be great. As long as we can still do that with sand volleyball. That sand volleyball, one is quieter. And two, um, as was pointed out, there's, there's been a lot of community interest and since we have other pickleball courts, it would be nice to try to provide something that people are asking for. Um, so I'm fine with that. One of the questions are i- i- in the, in the presentation was talking about getting, um, cost estimates. We may want to hold off on that. I mean, we, we kind of kneecapped a little bit of that discussion by approving the park building, but I think we still need to look at our capital projects and priorities and see where they are. And to me, a, a back of the envelope is good enough for that discussion for this. So I, however we go with this, I don't know that we need to go get really detailed estimates for this yet until we know where it fits in our, in our priority list.
Right, right. And, and the benefit, um, of sand volleyball is if, if we are looking for a way to still activate this park without the $6 million price tag, sand volleyball is something we could do, you know, a hundred thousand dollars probably would help with some of the, the drainage issues we're seeing now. Um, it's a very affordable way to activate the park without the price tag. Yep.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just, I, I fully support, uh, the change to the, the plan to add the volleyball. Um, as you pointed out, it's been something that's been asked for. Uh, it's amenity that we don't currently have in the city and as you pointed out, uh, but also, uh, one of the things I think that we didn't fully consider until after the fact with the first plan is that one of the, one of the big, uh, features at Homecoming is a sensory playground and, uh, the sound generated by a pickle ball court isn't necessarily complimentary to a sensory playground. So I think this will be a far more compatible use in the park, uh, with our long-term plans. Um, and as you mentioned, hopefully, uh, down the road, we can figure out a way to, you know, maybe phase this in, uh, as opposed to the full bu, build out. But, um, yeah, I appreciate the work you've done on this. Uh, and I, we've been working together with,
About a year.
Yeah, with, with the community and, and, and they've been great too. So, uh, but I, I think this is a, this is a good change here.
No, and I, and I did fail to mention, so one of the, the other selling points, please, for, for parks, um, sand volleyball, you know, based, based on the community feedback we've seen is that the high school age, which we have a really hard time engaging with currently. So this would be a great way. It's just on the street from the high school. Um, that's currently a gap that we're unable to fill with our, with our current programming, which is just another reason we're, we're attracted by this.
Channel.
Um, I'm just one of seven, but I, I support, fully support your recommendation. Bullet point number three, authorizing you to request cost estimates by a formal solicitation. And then like we just did, come back to us with how much does that cost? And then we can, I, I fully support seeing this come to fruition in the next few months. I'd love to see it. So whatever, thanks.
So the community understands there won't be bathrooms there anytime soon, that it's a porta potty. If we were to build this phases in, yes.
You're saying if we just do the
If we just put, throw a sand volleyball court down, they understand.
Limited amenities, yes ma'am.
They understand that there'd just be porta potties. And they're, they're not going to, they understand they can't come hat in hand six months later and at, I mean, they can ask for a bathroom, but they understand they're not getting it, right? I mean, I, the thing is, is that I was a little surprised that we didn't save hundreds of thousands of dollars. I, I don't know what I was thinking or tens of thousands of, I guess we saved tens of thousands of dollars switching from pickleball to sand volleyball. So then I Googled it and I was a little surprised to see how much sand volleyball courts, I mean, it wasn't astronomical, but I was also, I guess I was surprised to see how kind of affordable pickleball courts are. So, uh, because I expected like the nexus to be a lot more, but it's not six million more. It's not, I mean, there's not going to be bathrooms there. I mean, we'd have to find a lot of money because of septic. So, um, the only other comment I have is that this plan we adopted was hard fault. It took us a lot of effort to get a plan that the community accepted. I think that sand volleyball is likely an improvement for the neighbors over pickleball because of the noise, but it's not so quiet. And, uh, maybe we'd have to put up signs to, I don't know what we would do. But, um, now you're going to get mad at me, I don't know.
Since it's not lit.
Oh, right, it won't be at night.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, never mind, not lit, not lit. And they need to understand that too, right? Do they understand that the community, the young, the kids that are, you're talking to, they understand there won't be lights?
Right, so there, so there is the new solar light, but it is, it's not going to shine on the volleyball.
Right, so this will be an activity that stops at dark.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so go back to your, um, slide that was what your guidance was you needed from us.
Or just, just to review and get if.
Right, so it sounds like we're okay with the change. And you need to start that process, whatever process you're going to do. And then if it doesn't cost any money to get estimates, I don't know how you do that. I guess a formal solicitation process, uh, then we probably should do it.
We have the, yeah, because the numbers I have right now, the 5.5, 5.6 are from Pond, the designer.
Okay, I don't think you need to reprice the whole park. You absolutely do not need to reprice the whole park unless this council thinks we have $6 million that we don't have. You need to get a price for the sand volleyball court being installed there. That's all you need because we don't have the money to build out the park. And if we had $6 million, that's like a whole nother process to discuss how we're going to spend it. So we need just to get a price for the sand volleyball court. I mean, they need to understand the, you need to include whatever has to be done. And we need to understand that too. So if there's $200,000 worth of site work before you can put it in, I mean, that could be a, a no. But just do what we need to do and bring us back an estimate. But don't reprice the plan.
Would you, so for the, so I'm sure, um, for the May meeting, you want me to bring back pricing for, um, well, it's not quite enough time.
No, when you, we're not, when you're ready.
Any sort of community vetting between now and then? Are you comfortable with what has been sent to me?
I think you're changing a plan that was approved by the community to some extent. I think we have to do something. I would offer a meeting on the site.
Put something maybe in the Friday newsletter.
Yeah, something and maybe the two representatives of district two can go back and communicate with the leaders of the effort. Go ahead.
Ju- just one of the requests while we're looking at it, uh, obviously not the full park, but, um, I know we've done some site grade work in the past that really is low cost. Uh, could we also look at maybe grading the, the, the field, open play field next to it as part of this process? Um, and just as a separate line item, just because if it's only an extra $20,000 or whatever, I don't, I don't know what that cost would be. It might be worth considering doing the two together.
I, I'm just going to throw back out stormwater again because that open play field is a swamp with rain right now. It's a, a a storage area for water, honestly. So I think if that gets regraded, it's going to have to include stormwater control with it. I don't know that we can just regrade it. I think if that gets regraded, it's gonna have to include stormwater control with it. I don't know that we can just regrade it.
And also, we I don't think we can do stormwater until we address septic versus sewer. So this that's like a domino effect of very expensive. Right? Nice idea, Tom, but no.
I will say the sand volleyball that when we've looked at it preliminary with with tris capes, there's a lot of drainage that goes into it when you build a court. You're not just. Throwing sand. So we're hoping that that will mitigate some of that water you're seeing currently.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, you have your feedback you need.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, public comments. I have one card. Uh we have uh Zach and if anybody else wants to speak, their cards in the back. Fill them up and bring them up. You'll have three minutes, Zach, when you start at the podium.
Awesome. Thanks. Um so here today, I'm uh. I wanna talk about, you know, potential visions for for the future of Dunwoody. You know, we were just talking a lot about the budget and these kind of. Wacky do measures to like eke out a little bit of money. Like I know we're talking about. You know, looking through our couch cushions with unallocated funds, you know. Like w- we have a budgetary problem here in Dunwoody. We were running a one point three million dollar deficit. This year, um and you know, that money is being taken out of our um reserves. Um you know, likely it's going to be something around two million next year, you know, I don't know. But. You know, it is something that is gonna continually be a problem in the future. And I I have emailed all of you all about that. Um but really, I'm I wanna talk about the frozen asset clause. And the frozen asset clause in our charter, it is the. Basically, the value in which a homestead is taxed at in our city property taxes is frozen. At the time that it is bought, um you know. It it was implemented in two thousand eight. So if you bought before two thousand eight, it's frozen at two thousand eight. And so our city property taxes, it's forty percent times the value of when the home was bought. You know, parentheses, times the mileage rate of point three oh four minus the point one deduction. Um for um homeowners. And so this is specifically for homestead. So basically, what kind of happened has happened right now is that. Our new homo- our new our new homeowners who are families who are putting their their kids in our schools as well as. You know, our renters are paying much more in the rate of their property, which renters don't even get to own it. Then then, you know, the people who bought their property today. And so what is this going to end up doing? You know, uh in kind of looking at the data. It's gonna be in about five to seven years, it's going to bankrupt Dunwoody. Like this is a problem. That really, really needs to be addressed and it needs to be voted upon by the public to get rid of this. You know, we can kick the can down the road. With, you know, our different wackadoo measures. You know, I've also heard, you know, increasing the mileage rate. Which will have to be voted on, you know, special purpose tax district. But at the end of the day, it's going to continue to affect. Our current families in Dunwoody. The renters right now. You know, most of them are families who are sacrificing a lot for their children to be in Dunwoody schools. And that's the same for our new homeowners today. And in doing this, you know, we're continually deplacing the financial burden on these families. Like I want our police to get raises. I want us to have these parks. Like I want us to have all this stuff, but we're not gonna be able to afford it because. Our revenue is not increasing with inflation because. People aren't actually paying the value of their property tax. Like we have to vote on these things, please.
Thank you. Uh that's the end of public comment. I don't have any other cards. And now council comments. Lemonade Days was fantastic. Thank you to all who did it. Uh. The event at the village was also great and the AAPI event was great. There was a lot going on. Zach was working really hard at Lemonade Days. I never saw him stand still. Um and. That is all we have. We need executive session for legal and personnel. So I'll need a motion for that. Oh, Tom, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Hey, gonna say pretty much what you said, just uh thank uh busy weekend in Dunwoody. I do wanna uh thank all the volunteers that. Uh helped pull these off. And I also wanna send a special thanks to our police department for making sure everybody felt safe at these events as well. So it'd been a. Really fun weekend in Dunwoody.
Move to um exit to executive session for purposes of legal and personnel.
Thank you. Uh all in favor? Uh here, uh no, can't really vote now. Uh we will be back.
Move to Jurn.